Good morning. I'll call and order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners for Wednesday, March 15, 2017. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
If you stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation led by Reverend Ken Morton, Church of Christ in Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, our Father in heaven, we come to pray at this time, this morning, to discuss the various affairs affecting our county here in Franklin, Kansas. We appreciate your blessings upon us and our nation, and we ask that you continue to bless us as we go about today's business. Pray for your guidance. We pray for the wisdom of Solomon for these commissioners. We pray for patience and understanding as well of those attendants, and we pray for the example that can be followed as we lead our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in his end of life.
Brings us to Correspondence and Organizational Business.
I don't have anything today.
Your report. And Public Comment, do we have anyone signed up?
We do. Norman Woogie.
All right. Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. Public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Norman Woogie, 37 90 Pawnee Road. Came in and read your ethics things. I suppose you guys read those once in a while. I'd like to make a suggestion. Maybe you should engage with the Planning Advisory Board on Thursdays. This would better inform your board of the way that board reaches on the issues such as insured entrances to the properties and safety concerns of your constituents. Then your board can be better informed on the choices and see how the planning commission functions and see their thoughts and the questions that are raised. So it's important, it's so important that this board is that interested so that your board can appear right and not be embarrassed.
Any others? All right. That brings us to our Consent Agenda, which today would include considering approving minutes from our March 8 meeting. Claim vouchers in the amount of $760,571.30. Tax change orders are in the amount of a negative $344.72. And Habitat for Humanity is requesting that we waive fees at the transfer station for a project they are going to be working on March 18 on Burke Street in Ottawa. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
All right. Our first item of business is a rezoning application, and Larry is here to fill us in on the details.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've indicated, the first item this morning will be the consideration of the don't change application 1612-1442. This is filed by the Reese family. The purpose for the rezoning is to rezone approximately nine and a half acres from 160 acre tract to refinance the existing residence that's currently on that property. The planning commission considered this matter at their meeting in January and have unanimously recommended the approval of the rezoning of the approximately nine and a half acres from A1 to RE residential estate, finding that it did satisfy all of the criteria of our comprehensive plan as well as the provisions set forth in the findings necessary that are contained in our zoning regulations. They have forwarded a recommendation then to the county commissioners to approve the rezoning as requested and to further amend the county official zoning map accordingly. There was one issue that the planning commission was a little concerned with, and that was the access drive. As you can see on the aerial photo attached as a part of your staff report, that comes in off of Rock Creek Road. However, they do satisfy all the criteria as terms of lot frontage, having direct access onto a county maintained road system, and that would be on Texas Road, even though their access drive is probably not going to move. They can't grant an easement to themselves because they own the remaining 150 acres as well as the approximately 10 acres. So the planning commission had a little concern with that, but they do satisfy all of the specific criteria of our zoning and subdivision regulations. So we find that it is substantially in compliance with all of the county's regulations. I have nothing further unless any of you have questions.
I don't have a picture of that on my...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we didn't get a map this time.
Get a map to take a look at that.
Familiar with the property, but...
Does Larry, would that create an issue if the property sold then?
If, if it's sold, then, and the owner didn't want to grant them an easement to use that, if it's sold to another party, they could then get direct access right out to a Texas Road. They'd have to build their own access driveway. But they didn't envision that they were going to sell it if it was being done solely for the purpose of refinancing. Several of the counties don't go through this particular process, and the result of that was evident when the banks foreclosed on a number of these properties, and they only foreclosed on a small piece. It created a lot of illegal, non-conforming tracts of land, and that further complicated things because it's very difficult then to get refinancing if the bank took it back because if you're a non-conforming use, anything happens, you don't get the bill back without totally complying with the regulations. So fortunately, we've had the foresight to address that issue for the last 13 years. And I think that it was in recognition that once you have created these kinds of situations, there's negotiable as a dollar in your pocket. So we have been fairly fortunate that we had the foresight to address that issue before it ripened into the situation that happened when Fannie Mae and Betty Mac and all of them went under.
Any other questions for Larry?
You're talking about this access road here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seen it? Okay. There's the other drivers. Larry, when you have like an island, an island rezone, kind of like that, how long would the easement be if they sold it for another, if they sold that house and nine and a half acres? How wide easement would somebody have to get to get out to the road?
If they were going to use that, frankly, we don't have any specific requirements for the private driveways, and that's what would become a private driveway. And since it's not providing the frontage that's required, we have a certain lot length to width ratio for parcels that are created. This wouldn't be affected because it's just an easement, and typically the easements are going to be about 20 feet in width so that you can accommodate two vehicles. But again, that would be up to the buyers and sellers as to how they want to negotiate that, unless it went to the courts, and then it'd be up to the judge to make those determinations. And we do see that once...
It is feasible to put a driveway off of Texas Road. Sure. Yeah.
Any other questions for Larry? Everybody ready to make a motion to approve this rezoning application?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Our second item of business is to consider entering into a lease purchase contract with TASER International. I believe the sheriff's here to fill us in on the details of this item.
As you see, this is a, to discuss entering into a lease purchase contract. Typically, a purchase for these type, for this type of equipment would just, we would typically make this purchase, but since this is a lease purchase, it takes it out for five years. It commits the county to making payments for five years, so we felt more appropriate to bring it before the commission. It's just pretty self-explanatory. We do use tasers. They're electronic control device. Most people have seen them on the news or on TV or anything. These are, we use these for the safety of the corrections officers and the public as well as for the safety of inmates if we have to, if they have to be controlled. It is much more humane to use a TASER to get them under control than it is to have to use actual hands-on force or striking force because injury can, can result when that happens. So this is done for safety reasons. We are looking to purchase 12 devices. This would be for our jail staff, and under the lease purchase, it is for five years. During the time of, during that five-year time, they are covered under a 100% replacement warranty. So if something goes wrong with them, they won't, they don't just fix them, they actually will replace the device for us. That price comes out to $3,168 each year for a total of $16,045 because there's also some shipping in there of 200, almost $206. This would be paid for out of the jail trust fund. The funds in the jail trust fund are generated through the commissions that the county makes off of the sale of commissary items as well as phone calls and those type of things in the jail that are made by the inmates. And that fund can be used for anything that is a safety, security, well-being of the inmates, and this would fit in, into that. We have roughly $25,000 in that fund right now. The reason that we would not look to make a total purchase instead of doing this is because that fund is also used when we have to buy the supplies and the things that we need for the indigent inmates. We replace our mattresses this way. The inmate uniforms are purchased this way. So we need to make sure that we have the funds in there to do that. And this year, our major purchase out of this, out of this fund will be the mattresses. So what we're asking is to be able to, to enter the contract, we'll spend about $3,200 each year out of that trust fund. The fund, unless something really major happens, this will, there should not be a problem at all funding it out of that. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just got one question. Gonna have to do with this purchase or anything, but under the training of these, you actually TASER each other during the training?
Yes, yeah. It's not required, but someone gets tased in every class. So they do know what it feels like, they know what it looks like, and, and so that is part of the training. And we have certified trainers in patrol and in corrections that we do the instruction in-house. So, and the jail administrators here, if any of you have any questions more specific on this, so.
So this is a five-year contract for $16,045?
Yes, sir.
And that would make us purchasing 12?
Yes, purchases 12 plus the, the holsters and cartridges for those.
I wouldn't guess that they would have been over $1,000 apiece, but I guess...
They are, they are pretty, they're pretty expensive. These are the new, and these are the new models, which is why we have to buy holsters because they don't, the old model that they are phasing out, that they don't, that they don't work on anymore, was a little different design, and so we have to replace the holsters that we have for them as well.
And during those five years, I assume that anything that goes wrong with them, they'll replace them and take care of that?
Yes, sir. They will replace it. They'll just give us a new device.
Do you have any numbers on how many times we use tasers? I mean, just to...
Exact number, I do not have. I know that they get, the show of that force typically will gain compliance, but we do have to tase people. But then after someone gets, after it's deployed on someone in the jail, it's usually a while again before that happens because people don't want that, so.
Do you have old tasers then?
We do have some, some older tasers. These are, X26P is the model, and that we are transitioning from the X26, just an X26, and they added the P for the new model. And we, our numbers of those are dwindling, and they are due to be replaced just because of the technology of it. And when we, there are enough differences in it that it is a different training class from the 26P as it is the 26, and we need everyone to be on the same, using the same platform just for operational purposes, so.
Is there a trade-in for the old models?
$100 apiece.
$100, yeah.
We'll be taking advantage of that?
It'll be taken off the first year.
Got you.
Jeff, how many of these are going into the jail?
These are all for the jail.
Okay.
Jail, well, jail and the jail staff includes court security. Yeah, so we, we have the court security personnel and the jail.
Transport?
Yeah, transports, all them.
And I guess is the idea, and just educate me here if I need an education, but I don't think you work in the jail more than so many on any given shift, and I don't know how much court security you have, but is the idea for everyone to have their own TASER? Because 12 seems like overkill if they're all going in the jail.
They still would not all have their own, no. Court security would, and help me out here, Justin.
It's actually six for corrections staff.
Okay.
Three for the full-time court security officers there, and they'll have one full-time all the time. And the other ones will be used for Deputy Reader, Gilkes, and Doug McIntosh when they're out doing their patrolling when Reader's checking on him.
And they, and they all fall under that jail budget?
And that just breaks it down to who's actually getting it.
Sure. Very good. Okay, thanks.
That way, everybody's covered. We're not having to take one from here to replace you.
Right. Makes sense, okay.
Do you have these for the juvenile detention center?
I don't have, I don't have the juvenile detention center. That is, that falls under the administrator, and I don't know if, what they are permitted to use or not.
All right.
Is the change in, in this model from the previous model in the probe or the shock mode?
It's in the actual device. It's itself. The brains of them are in the handle. They used to be in the battery. Now it's actually in the device. So now batteries aren't, that's how that works, right? Now the batteries are not quite as expensive. The batteries used to be the expensive part because it also had the, had the brains of the, of the device in it as well. So they've changed some things up on them a little bit. When it is deployed, we can, we download, they have a little computer in them, so we plug that into our computer, to the program that we have. It will tell us, it'll give us a lot of data as to how many times the, that it was deployed, how long the, how long the electrical current lasted. It gives us a lot, a lot of those details in it. So it's, it's, it's a good, it's a good device. And they're, they're like a smart weapon, I guess. They, they're not your typical, I think I hit him this many times with a baton type deal, where you're, we're getting beyond that to try to be more humane.
Trackable too? They have the little...
That's correct.
...paper hole punches or whatever in them, so?
That's right.
You can't, that's why you really don't see them used in crimes because every time they're deployed, those things go everywhere. They're impossible to pick up.
That's right.
They're all tracked to some...
And they are tracked, that's correct.
Well, my opinion is this is what that trust fund is for, and if you feel like it's necessary, I'll make the motion to...
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. That brings us to staff reports.
Yeah, the finance officer job description has been completed. That's been a lengthy process, and the director of HR and myself have worked in collaboration with Janet as well as the county treasurer on putting that together, and we're pretty happy with how that looks. We're currently in the process of putting together a list of basically where we're going to try and recruit from. We're establishing a procedure for how we're going to interview the candidates, and we're working on that. My hope is to have that actually posted either later this week or the beginning of next week. So probably leave it posted for 30, if not 60 days. I'm still working with HR on that. Janet and I are currently with Joy's assistance, working on the budget, and we feel like that's in a great place right now. So we're, I think my priority is more on making sure we get a good pool of applicants and getting the right person. So while I want to do this efficiently, I want to make sure that we're, we're doing a thorough job, so. We've also received, as you guys know, our temporary contract with the Chamber for Tourism Services is up at the end of this month. We've received a proposed budget from them. That will be on next week's agenda for discussion. So I would have liked to have done it this week, but John Cohen is out of town. So the plan will be to discuss it next week, and hopefully we can come to an agreement on, I think the primary issue will be the amount of tax dollars that we provide. If we can agree on that hopefully next week, then we would have one more meeting on the 29th whereby we could approve the agreement, and the chamber is already set up to have a special meeting whereby they approve. So I think we're in a position to get all of this completed timely, provided we can arrive at a agreed-upon amount, so. And that's all I have today.
All right. Sheriff, do you have anything to...
Yesterday, the KBI sent out a press release about the sexual assault kit initiative, and as you know, I'm, I represent the Sheriff's Association on that working group at the state level, and we were the, are the first state in the country to get 100% compliance, voluntary compliance from all of the, there's 383 law enforcement agencies in the state, and we got 100% compliance on our inventory of that. So we know how many unsubmitted sexual assault kits there are in Kansas. There's 2,220. All of ours have been, for the sheriff's office, have been submitted to the lab. We did have some that were, had been unsubmitted, and those are unsubmitted for a variety of reasons, but ours are now all submitted, and we are in the process of trying to get everyone submitted, but we're doing those time and amounts so we don't completely overwhelm the, the lab. The significance of that is that a lot of states have been able to get compliance, but it was not voluntary because it was a legislative mandate. This legislative session, there was proposed legislation that was going to direct law enforcement agencies to do, require to do a lot of the things that our working group was already able to accomplish. The difference of that is with the law, with our input, input from law enforcement, input from the, from social, from the social workers as far, and as the medical professionals, we've been able to do this in a way that makes sense, and lots of times when things come down from Topeka to mandate us to do things, it's not the most efficient, it costs us more money, and creates more workforce and hassle. So we, we tried, that's the main goal of this group, is so we could head that off. Where we're at on it now is that we are still working with some pilot organizations. We developed some protocol. Most of these are cold cases, and if we end up getting, getting a hit through what is called CODIS, it's a, it's a DNA database. If we get, get any type of information there that might lead to a potential suspect or if there is a, some, sometimes we, we have already been able to identify what could have been considered to be a serial offender, and we've developed a protocol of how those things are handled and where we go from there. So tomorrow, I'll actually be up in Topeka, meeting with a House Committee tomorrow morning. We're doing a presentation up there on some of our findings and some of our recommendations that'll be going forward. So I wanted to update you all on that. The chief butler from the police department here in Ottawa represents the Chiefs Association on that working group as well, so Franklin County's been well represented there. And the other thing that I wanted to let you know, Chair Waymire and I had talked a while back, we talked about the HUMV that we have. Just to update everyone, we, we have the HUMV, the HUMV actually belongs to the federal government. It has been on loan to the sheriff's office a few years ago. They paid a transfer fee to get that in. But last year, year before last, there was an executive order that came down from Department of Justice under Eric Holder. Some things are in place that are not very comfortable for someone in my position. The HUMV goes back to the government, to the federal government on Tuesday. We do have some firearms that are also owned by the federal government, and we have pulled, those are not on the street. Two of those, we have found a home that where those are going to be transferred to an agency in Missouri. The others, if they are not transferred to another agency, will be going, be in return to the, to the government. So just so you know where we are on those things, and if you have any questions about what some of those extra things were that came down in the executive orders, if you want to get with me after the meeting, I can, I can explain it to you in detail, or I have the report on my, on my desk if you guys want to look at it. So because that HUMV was used to access areas that you, we couldn't get in a regular vehicle, as you, you know, a few months ago, we talked about getting that UTV that was paid for on an 80% grant, and we do have that in, and it has the, it has all the equipment in it and the graphics on it, and we're ready to go on that. So that, so we're not going to be lessening our accessibility to get to any, to any type of incident that may occur that we need to get back to. We do have a vehicle to, to get that done. So if you have any questions on either one of those, you just feel free to holler at me after the meeting, and I'll get those for you. But if you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess, I guess one, why do they want the HUMV back? What are they going to do with it?
Well, it's not necessarily that they want it back, but they always maintain ownership of that. We've been fortunate that we have a National Guard armory here, and so we have been able to... And so we have been able to, whenever it needed maintenance, we would take it out there. They, and they were doing a lot of the upkeep and maintenance on that for us. So we were not in a too bad of a position. But the way that the new order classified the vehicle as a tactical vehicle and had some other things on it, it just was not, it was just not, not a good situation for us. And it was, and most of the time, it sat out at the Public Works Barn, taking up space that, that those guys need. And so it's, the easiest answer was just to return that to its owner. And that's what we're going to be doing, so.
Due to the rules, the new rules is far less of an asset than it was a couple of years ago.
That's, that's correct. There was a, there's a lot more, there's always strings attached when you get anything from the federal government. But these strings became, as I would put it, more of a rope tied into a noose. And I did not want that. So we, we're just gonna, we're gonna pass on this one, so, thank you.
Thanks for your time. John, did you have anything?
Just came in this morning, it's more of a clarification with the free dump. Even though we haven't changed anything, as in previous years, I've been getting more calls this year of confusion. And I just want to clarify that the, the containers that are placed, we don't, we don't supply them. We don't, we don't, we don't pay for them. That's, the cities pay for that. We just allow them to be dumped for free. That's one question I've gotten repeatedly. And, and I just want to make sure that everybody understood that that's, that's the way. Then that's the biggest question that I've had. And, and aside from the dates and things, and letters were sent out to each, each of the towns to verify or clarify the dates and, and things. But I wanted to make sure that everybody understood how that process worked. And if anybody had any other questions, I know, like I said, a lot of the questions are coming from their town meetings and things. So I didn't know if any of you had felt, had got any extra other questions that need clarification on or, or anything else.
Clarify that that goes on for two weeks before, and then there's the big weekend out the landfill where you can haul your own stuff?
Yeah, pretty much. And those boxes are, are intended for the construction and demolition waste only. And then any household waste, that is during the transfer station being open for free on that Friday and Saturday is for household waste. And then city of Ottawa residents, they're, they come out on the same day as the transfer station is open for everybody to come out because they don't have the boxes placed in Ottawa for our cleanup.
Tires and appliances still cost?
Appliances containing free on, yep.
Leaves and gas, grass are always free, right?
Yep, and metal.
The ones that are provided to the cities, who come, what company provides those?
That's split between Ottawa Sanitation and MBT&amp;W. And, and actually, I've heard that TTNT is, is getting involved in this, this year too. More or less, that's, it's been pretty well set up in the years past. But if that wants to be changed by any individual city, then all they do is call, you know, either Ottawa Sanitation or whoever did it the previous year for them, and tell them that we want to use so-and-so. And then they can call the other company and say.
So those companies charge a fee for the dumpsters?
Rental fee.
But county doesn't charge a fee for the dumping of them?
No.
We allow them to dump free?
Yep.
Now, that helps a lot.
John, could you review those dates?
Yes. The cities west of 59, which is Pomona, Williamsburg, Princeton, and Richmond, will all have the opportunity for containers from, on April 27th, 28th, and 29th. And the cities east of 59, Wellsville, Rantoul, and Lane, will have opportunities for their, to have their roll of containers May 4th, 5th, and 6th. And then those containers will be dumped for free the following Monday and/or Tuesday. Just gives the holler an extra. So following, following their dates, Monday or Tuesday after, which is either May 1st and May 2nd for the Pomona, Williamsburg, Princeton, Princeton, and Richmond, or May 8th and/or May 9th for Wellsville, Rantoul, and Lane. And then the free dump at the transfer station is May 12th and May 13th. And that's for city of Ottawa residents to haul anything that they have, yard waste or MSW's regular trash, as well as everybody in the county to bring their regular household trash.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
You bet.
Janet, do you have anything?
I just want to let you guys know that tomorrow is the Southeast Kansas meeting. Commissioner Oglesby will be joining me and seven other people from the county. So we'll have a lot of departments represented heading down there. We're going to OSB go tomorrow. So emergency management is going, treasurer's office, clerk's office, registrar of deeds, appraiser's office, and public works. And then, of course, your commission representatives. So just a bunch of us going. It's usually a good meeting, pretty informative for, from each department's standpoint. So looking forward to that.
Mistress comments, board reports. Nothing from Brian?
Well, Terrick and I attended the chamber board meeting on Tuesday. And basically, a lot of what they talked about was the revamp of the Leadership Franklin County, Kansas program and how that's going to work now based on new curriculum. And they talked about a lot of the classes, the way they're going to set them up are going to be so that it's going to be more of a public training type of workshop in the mornings from 8:30 to about 11:30, opening that up to more than just those that are in the class so that other people can obtain some of that training without being maybe committed to the whole process. And then the class would have their part of the, the day from 11:30 to about 4:30. And, and dragging it out pretty much over a year, doing it more quarterly than monthly and things along that line. John Cohen was gone, so it, there wasn't a lot of other things that were discussed other than the Young Entrepreneurs Academy. They, they wanted at least 12 to 24 students in that. They were only able to get about eight. And they're hoping to keep working on that to be able to revamp that up and get that ready to go for the next year as well. So anything besides that?
Monday night, I went to the Lane City Council meeting. They discussed their dog problem, also some sewer and water line connections to people who are outside the city limits. They also have a resident who keeps removing warning signs along their road frontage. So I'm not sure if the sheriff or whatever has some say on that, and we'll see what we work out. And I also don't know if our sheriff's aware, but apparently there was a, a car chase from Miami County or, okay, through, through the city that they had concerns about. And then yesterday, I attended the Wellsville Chamber of Commerce meeting. They had continued discussion about getting a newspaper started. They also had, had some conversations with the Edgerton Chamber of Commerce about maybe a possible merge or combining of resources. They also had some questions about our former Chip and Seal program, road program, where we continue to upgrade some roads and if that was a possibility about getting it reinstated, what we're doing. They have a golf tournament coming up the first weekend in June, and they have a ladies' night coming up in April, and some other events that they were working on.
I haven't been to any meetings. Also, I won't be here next week, Monday and Wednesday, I'll be gone. Quick question, was that just a discussion on the chamber and the guest tax next week? Or it actually going to be a vote next week on that?
No, I don't, what I envision is just a discussion. And primarily, it'll be a discussion of the budget submitted by the chamber. I, I would tell you that I will have the agreement largely done by then. But I mean, we would still have another meeting. So I envision the vote actually coming on the 29th. And that would give me enough time to take whatever direction you guys give me on the 22nd in terms of negotiation or amounts, so.
On those line items on the budget, will there be a breakdown? Or you, I, my question I had was, there was salaries and then there was administration. And I just questioned, you know, what fell under those, so.
Sure, yeah, and I, I've already explained to John that he needs to be prepared to go into much more detail in terms of breaking all that down. So I think he'll be ready to do that.
Right, okay, great.
It's all right, that should be it. Unless there's anything else, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Hold in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned.